Seems like we haven't had a meeting in three or four weeks. And I guess it has been three or four weeks. Actually, it's been longer than that, hasn't it? Four weeks. Wow. Well, I hope everyone enjoyed their time on. All right. Minutes of June 20th, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June 20th?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bills. And motion to approve the financial.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report? The only thing that I wanted to make a comment to, and I know it's extremely premature, and I think we're still getting more, we're finishing up on the bills, but based on the June 30th sheet, once again, it's very preliminary, but it looks like possibly we may have been under budget by $636,000. So fingers crossed. So that's great news for the residents of the town of Elton. And I think that's about, fingers crossed, I think it would drop us about, I think that's about 3% under budget, so that's pretty good. Or 6%. I gotta calculate that a little bit, but not 100% sure yet, but fingers crossed. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have a budget amendment, 2018-08.
Yes, I do. Like your amendment, number 2018-08, is for applicable year 2018, is recognized when in course of the year we receive $62,102 in Elton downtown facade grant, which was court paid out for different businesses, like this, and that program is recognized, both the revenue from that grant and just $2,102 in the financial. This is just for year 2018.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept budget amendment 2018-08 to recognize the $62,102 from the Elton downtown facade grant?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we have the employee of the quarter presentation.
Mr. Dan Handley. I'm gonna bring the employee up.
Andrew. This is Mr. Andrew Taylor, Department of Public Works. Mr. Taylor served with the Department of Public Works for 12 years and becomes valued employee and reliable and important member of the BPW team. His nomination as the 2017 fourth quarter Employee of Distinction was based on his extraordinary service during recent effort by the town to assist a number of individuals who established campsites and town parks contrary to both the interests of those individuals and the public interest. Mr. Taylor's respectful manner and sensitivity to those individuals was remarkable and served as an example to those who serve, or have public service. We applaud Mr. Taylor for his service to the town and to the residents of our community.
Andrew, if you can, I'd like to get you back here and take a picture with us. If you'd be so kind to allow us to have a photo with you. I think we can get it right here in the middle. I think I like taking a picture up here better.
You look too tall there.
I look a little taller. Now I don't look too tall at all. Are we good? Which way we need to go? Everybody smile and say cheese. Here we go, another cheese. God, thank you. It'd be nice if we could've figured out a way to drop these chairs down. Okay, we have a presentation on the town of Elton pedestrian plan. Come on down. It's just being presented by WLMAPCO this evening.
The report's available online, so you will be able to read it. Well, good evening. I'm Jake Thompson. I'm a transportation planner for the Wilmington Area Planning Council, and I'm here to present the final report of the Elton pedestrian plan. The purpose of the plan is to identify necessary improvements to the town's pedestrian network, ensure compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and support making Elton a more walkable community. This plan has been guided by a steering committee, including representatives from the town of Elton, the Maryland State Highway Administration, and WLMAPCO. Here's a timeline showing all the planning activities that went into the development of this report. In March 2017, we completed the ADA evaluation, which looked at the existing conditions of pedestrian effort. Then we did a review of previous studies. The super kinds of pedestrian-related recommendations have already been made for Elton. Then we did a pedestrian prioritization analysis, which identifies areas that are likely to have high levels of pedestrian activity. We did a thorough public outreach process, including a public survey, and then developed draft recommendations in December of last year. Beginning of this year, we held a public workshop here in the town hall. Then we did outreach with students at Elton Middle School. We developed the draft report in May, finalized the report in June, and it was adopted by the WLMAPCO council just last week. The first task of this process was to determine the Americans with Disabilities compliance of sidewalks and curbs grabs in town. So we worked with the town and the state of Maryland to measure all the public sidewalks and curbs grabs in town, and we also hope to see a crosswalk in the line. This map shows the results of the ADA evaluation. Just to summarize what you're seeing on the screen, downtown Elton mostly has complete sidewalks and curbs grabs, although since ADA standards are always evolving, not all of them have been upgraded to meet current ADA requirements. Outside of downtown Elton, many of the neighborhoods do not have complete sidewalks or curbs grabs, so makes for a disconnected pedestrian network. Next, we looked into previous studies that were completed in Elton and pedestrian-related recommendations. The East Coast Greenway Plan had a part of its group plans through Elton. A walkable community workshop was done there in 2008. The Elton Bicycle Plan proposed a bicycle infrastructure network for the town. The Elton Transit Oriented Development Plan had a primary recommendation of the train's main corridor, which would be a walkable route from the train station to Main Street if the train station were to be reopened. Top pedestrian priority segments is our pedestrian prioritization analysis for the WLMAPCO region. Identifies areas that should be prioritized for pedestrian improvements. The Locust Lane Sidewalk feasibility study looked into the possibility of adding sidewalk on the one-block stretch of Locust Lane between Main Street and Crime Street. Here's a map showing the primary pedestrian-related recommendations. In blue in the middle is the train domain from the Elton Transit Oriented Development Plan. In green are their preferred routes from the Elton Bicycle Plan. In gray are the higher scoring segments from the top pedestrian priority segments. Looks, should be orange, but looks gray here. Ah, that's the Locust Lane Sidewalk feasibility study. And the dotted line is from the East Coast Greenway Plan. The dotted purple is the intra-long road route, and dotted red is the planned off-road route. Next, we developed a pedestrian prioritization process, which was based on the top pedestrian priority segments for the WLMAPCO region, and adapted it for the scale of Elton. So we looked at a variety of criteria. We used these as technical scoring factors. Those criteria included the former train station, bus stops, commercial buildings, parks, schools, libraries, the East Coast Greenway, dense traffic analysis zones, those areas that have high levels of population employment, and the locations of pedestrian This map shows the results of the pedestrian prioritization process. In darker blue are areas that have a higher score. These are areas that are likely to have higher pedestrian activity and should be prioritized for improvements. So the higher scoring areas are downtown Elton, some of the surrounding neighborhoods, also along Route 40. Route 40 is not a walkable part of our planning. Does have a lot of businesses and bus stops that people may want to walk to. We utilized a variety of outreach methods to let people know about the plan and to hear their thoughts. So those included a public survey, which we did through the summer at WLMAPCO last year. We did a few outreach events. We were at the Elton Ball Fest, and we were at Acme. And we held two public workshops. One was in August 2017, where we encouraged people to take the survey. And we did another in January 2018. After we developed draft recommendations, we took those back out to the public so people could comment on those. We did some outreach with students at Elton Middle School. We distributed flyers and promoted the plan by internet, mail, and radio. This is an outreach map showing the approximate locations of survey respondents. This is just to show that all the Elton neighborhoods were represented. No one was left out of the outreach process. We received 135 survey responses in total, 49 of which were done at outreach events, and 86 were done on the web. I'll just go through some of the results from the survey. Eighty-three percent of respondents lived in Elton. The good turnout, we did receive a few responses from other cities and towns in the region. When asked, "What is your age group?", the majority of respondents were age 31 to 64. We did get a fair number of responses from seniors and young adults. However, we received a very small amount of responses from children under 16. So that's why we reached out to Elton Middle School and get into that little area. When asked, "How often do you walk to get around Elton?", 27% said often, 32% said sometimes, 32% said rarely, and 9% said never. When asked, "What are your top destinations in Elton?", some of the more frequently mentioned destinations were places like the shops downtown on Main Street, the Big Elton Mall, especially the Acme, Walmart, the Elton Library, Meadow Park, and Union Hospital. When asked, "Could Elton have a more complete or improved pedestrian network? Would you walk more to get around?", 56% said yes. The majority of respondents were interested in making Elton a more walkable community. Since we received so few responses from children under 16, we reached out to Elton Middle School, and we held a session with a small group of students there in February. The students learned about elements of a walkable community and the Elton pedestrian plan. And they split into groups to discuss and answer questions, and they had a lot of great ideas. We also developed a shortened version of the public survey, and students were required to take it during classes. So as a result, nearly 400 Elton Middle Schools took this survey. When asked, "How often do you walk to school?", 80% said never. However, 5% said they walk every day, and 15% said they walk at least occasionally. When asked, "Does Elton have a better pedestrian network? Would you walk more?", 38% said yes, 17% said no, and 45% said they were not sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but would the "never" include busing?
Busing? Buses to Middle School? I'm just asking whether they walk to school. What's any more specific than that? When asked, "Where do you like to go in Elton?", students responded with a variety of different stores and restaurants that they're interested in. When asked, "Do you feel the places you want to go in Elton are walking distance?", 54% said yes. This is a map of all the mathable infrastructure recommendations that were proposed by survey respondents, and these ended up being the prioritized recommendations that were in the final report. So overlaying on top of this map is the priority level, which comes from the pedestrian prioritization process. So if a recommendation is located in an area that had a high pedestrian priority score, then it would be considered a high priority recommendation. So the prioritized recommendations in the report are organized into two categories: townwide recommendations and road improvements. Townwide recommendations are listed in order of how frequently they are mentioned in the public outreach. So those include complete or repair existing sidewalks, install or upgrade curb ramps to meet ADA standards, mark crosswalks, improve lighting, resume passenger service to the Elton train station, and encourage mixed use and infill development. The road improvements offer detailed enhancements to specific geographic locations. Those include Bridge Street, major intersections along that route, Howard Street, Delaware Avenue, and the proposed pedestrian bridge over the Big Elton Creek, Meadow Park and Big Elton Mall, some additional trails are proposed for Meadow Park to improve connections, Route 40, major intersections along that route, Elton Heights, and some additional locations such as Elton Road, Hill Road, Delancey Road, and Money Lane. The first public draft was released for public comment on May 29th, and it was out for comment for the end of June. We received a small amount of feedback on that draft, and made some edits, and a final draft was released on June 29th. That draft was endorsed by WLMAPCO's Technical Advisory Committee on June 21st and the WLMAPCO council on July 12th. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Real quickly, and I know it's somewhat related to this, you're in Newark all the time. Is the train station doing pretty well? Is it on schedule?
Well, we are working on some projects. So we're working on a train station redevelopment, the groundbreaking just happened previously, and there's some projects to move service, including adding a third track between Wilmington and Newark, which would really allow more trains to come down to Newark.
Very good. Well, it's scheduled now. Anyone from the board have anything in regards to the pedestrian plan?
No, I'm real happy to see it completed, and thank you so much. I think a lot of the information that you have in here is very important for us to be able to move forward on. So once we adopt this, what will it help us do?
Well, should a project come in that's on one of the roads, for instance, on a state highway, we could make sure there's recommendations that a new project involves sidewalks or make improvements to the crosswalks or address whatever may be in that section of the road when it develops. Public Works could then prioritize some of their sidewalk projects based on this.
Right.
And there is opportunities for grant money to make ADA improvements on the sidewalks.
What's the possibility of having this study prompt the state into moving a little quicker?
Well, the state was involved in the, as part of the committee, advisory committee, but I'm not sure, you know, we just encourage them to comply with our plan.
With our plan?
Yes. Whenever they make any more improvements, we'll make sure we remind them that we have this plan and to look at it for the purposes of the community.
Right. Or to initiate a project.
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna call for, you need a motion to accept the resolution?
I would like to make sure that when we do get these upgrades in areas, the lighting is a big part of it. That would be included for the upgrade and maybe the funding for some grant money. Okay? Thanks.
You need us to accept the resolution? Is that, Lou, is that what you need us to do? Or?
Resolution.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
And all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yep, read it in the record.
Resolution R eight, 2018, a resolution of the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton to approve and endorse the Elton pedestrian plan. Whereas Elton 2010 Comprehensive Plan supports the multi-modal transportation system, including roads, transit, bus, rail, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities that serve the needs of residents, workers, visitors, shoppers, and owners. And whereas the Comprehensive Plan also states the need and plan toward implementing transportation improvements that meet the town's long-term management goals. Whereas promoting walking as a means of transportation for personal health and environmental reasons is a central tenet of the Elton Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the town of Elton submitted a unified planning work program request for Wilmington Area Planning Council, WLMAPCO, to assist the town in developing a comprehensive pedestrian plan that identifies necessary improvements to the town's pedestrian network and/or supports making Elton a more walkable community. And whereas the Elton pedestrian plan sets the town's existing pedestrian network to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, identifies previous studies completed in Elton, and prioritizes pedestrian network based on pedestrian activity using a technical scoring process. Whereas the Elton pedestrian plan employs inimitudes of thorough public engagement and support throughout the planning process, including a public survey and two public workshops. And whereas the Elton pedestrian plan was scored with several context-sensitive prioritized recommendations that will improve the safety and activity access to Elton's pedestrian network, now therefore be resolved. The mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton hereby endorse the final plan, final report recommendations of the Elton pedestrian plan.
We have a motion to accept Resolution R eight, dash 2018, approval and endorsement of the Elton pedestrian plan.
So moved.
Second. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Lou, I haven't got on you for a little while. Take the mic and aim it towards your mouth.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. That's for the people in the back. Let me catch you. 'Cause I know what you do. I ain't gonna tell one.
Okay, Lou, I think you're on.
He don't want your ears ready, old boy. That's what it is.
Okay, the first item I have is ordinance 10, dash 2018. Ordinance 10, dash 2018 is presented to the mayor and commissioner this evening for an introduction. Chapter 5.20 has been amended as follows. This relates to yard sales in the town code. Section 5.20.1010, definition, the term person is being defined as included under section 1.04.010, chapter 104, general provisions, town code. What that is, is the town already defined under its general provisions what a person is, whether it's corporation, nonprofit person, corporation, LLC, whatever. So we just fall back on that. Under section 5.20020, permit required, the number of yard sales permitted annually has been increased twice to four times. This will provide some additional flexibility for residents to offer personal possession for sale in open venue at their homes. Section 5.20020, permit required, provisional Sunday sales has been eliminated. Under section 5.20040, signs, words have been added requiring a yard sale permit to be removed following completion of the yard sale. Second provision of the section has been struck. Under section 5.20060, waiver requirements referenced to town council have been struck, and the words "town administrator" is inserted. This also rises to the town administrator to provide waivers to eligible organizations rather than going to the mayor and commissioners for that waiver. Under section 5.20070, violation penalty, a fine of $100 has been specified for a violation of this chapter. That includes the provisions and this amendments.
I think the, just to bring the board up to snuff a little bit, there was some questions today while I was out of town in regards to Sunday sales and yard sales. And I looked at the permitting process, and it said that anyone in the town of Elton that wanted to have a yard sale on a Sunday had to come in front of the mayor and commissioners for special approval for a yard sale. And it was a little crazy, quite frankly. I don't know what the thinking was. I'm sure it was probably before all of our times. I'm sure Sunday sales of yard sale probably had to do something with maybe there's a yard sale next to a church on a Sunday, and maybe one of the board members didn't like it at the time, maybe it was added. I'm not 100% sure, but I don't see any reason why a person couldn't have a yard sale on a Sunday. How do you guys feel? I mean, I think that's the nuts and bolts of this, isn't it, Lou?
Yes. Actually, some people have yard sales, they can't exceed two days, but they might have it on a Saturday and Sunday. I don't have any Sunday yard sales. We have, it seems like kind of an aphrodisiac to prohibit it on a Sunday if somebody actually wants to do it and has the permit.
So this is for introduction purposes only tonight, so we'll introduce it. If we need to make any changes to it by the next meeting, then we'll do it at that point. So do we have a motion to accept ordinance 10, dash 2018, chapter 5.20, yard sales, presented for introduction?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion on the introduction? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introduction.
The next one I have is ordinance 11. 11, 2018, mending chapter 12.20, public park regulations of the town code, presented tonight also for introduction. Chapter 12.20 has been amended as follows. Under section 12.20050, wild animals, domesticated animals, control of animals, people waste prohibited, second paragraph, the following has been added to this section. A dog may be unleashed and permitted to run free inside a fenced area designated by a sign posted by the town of the Dog Park. Rules regulating the use of a Dog Park are posted at the location. There is no provision in the current code allowing a Dog Park or providing for Dog Parks, which we have in our park now, so I added that language to it. Under section 212.20050, wild animals, domesticated animals, control of animals, people waste prohibited, fourth paragraph, the following is added, including a Dog Park. In other words, people can't have their dog leave waste in the park, including the Dog Park, and we provide bags and trash receptacles for people to clean up after their dogs. And most people actually do, the majority do. Under section 12.20080, violation, a penalty for violation of this chapter is established at $100, specified rather than just reference to the code.
I would recommend the board accept this for introduction.
We have a motion to accept ordinance 11, dash 2018, chapter 12.20, public park regulations, presented for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Who enforces that, Lou?
The police.
Okay. So this one?
So it's against the law. The police enforce the law.
So somebody, someone has to call 911.
Because, you know.
I'm just, I'm asking to make sure that what I'm saying is correct. Someone has to call 911, explain that there's no emergency to that person, but yet there's someone leaving some waste from their dog, and the police is supposed to respond to that. I'm just asking, how is that supposed to do?
911's at 10. I don't think there's anybody watching for dogs, dog and waste in the park, but I'm sure if a policeman sees it, he'll remind the person if they have to clean it up, they're not gonna start packing them. I mean, the police are very liberal in terms of trying to work with citizens for the benefit of the community rather against them.
Is that true?
I'm not throwing it at the police. I'm saying as a citizen.
We would remind the citizen, if we were in city, we would raise somebody that.
Sure.
I'm not paying no bad price for the dog. I'm sure.
And?
Yes, if somebody wanted us to respond, they'd have to call 911. You know? This is the way it works.
So I'm saying that, even though I'm saying it in serious matter. This is, okay. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is just for our public parks, right? We still have an ordinance about dogs, unleashed dogs.
Yeah, that's a separate ordinance.
Separate, all separate. Okay. I'm good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next slide, I have the bid opening, Elton Town Square project, an ADA project. We solicited, we have a $135,000 grant from CBGG for the engineering design and, what is it?
And construction.
And construction, design specification. And as a result of that solicitation, I think we received two bids from engineering companies. And one bid is from the Duffield Associates. And the bid to perform the engineering design and specification totals $25,000. dollars. Duffield Associates, twenty-five thousand dollars. The others from KCI Technologies, head engineer. And KCI's bid for complete design and engineering services, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. My recommendation is that we tentatively award it to Duffield Associates pending game review of the biz.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept Duffield for twenty-five thousand dollars, tentative upon approval by town staff?
So.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The last item I have is an agreement. We have Mr. Jack Sins here with Unison Energy LLC and Dr. Schumel from Union Hospital. Should the board have any questions regarding this agreement? And I provided a summary and a copy of the agreement to the board. And essentially, the summary is that Unison Energy has proposed this agreement as an economic incentive for them to design and so operate, maintain a one thousand, two hundred kilowatt combined heat and power cogeneration system at Union Hospital. This system produces electric power, steam, hot water, and chilled water during certain periods of time. The chilled water is current seasonal, obviously, but power and steam and hot water would be a daily generation for the hospital. The agreement provides that Unison would pay the town a sum of four thousand dollars annually, going to twenty-year term of the agreement. This payment is made in lieu of the town billing Unison for personal property tax. Because the equipment is owned by, by the company, they are subject to personal property tax, but the town under this agreement will not bill them in lieu of a payment annually to the town. Agreement has been found acceptable by Unison, is presented to the mayor commissioners for consideration tonight, along with wide recommendation that the mayor commissioners were authorized this agreement with Unison Energy. Actually, the, the primary company is U E zero zero eight oh one Maryland LLC, a Delaware corporation, but its joint business is Unison Energy LLC. Correct?
Correct.
We have a motion to accept the agreement and authorize the, authorize me to sign and execute.
So.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the pilot agreement? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that completes my work tonight.
Very good. I've got a lot of stuff today. Yeah, not too much. I'd like to ask the board, we've got a couple of reappointments on the Historic District Commission. I'd like to reappoint Mrs. Misses Paula Newton for the term of September first, two thousand eighteen through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. We have a motion to accept that?
So.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on Ms. Paula Newton's appointment? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the second appointment that we have is for Ms. Brittany Schwartz for the term of August first, two thousand eighteen through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And this is also on the Historic District Commission. Do we have a motion to approve, Brittany?
So.
Second. Do we have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we've got a few things. One, I, hopefully everyone noticed the beautiful new carpet that we were very fortunate to be able to put into our meeting room tonight, very excited about that. This is the, probably the first, I know it's the first improvement that we've made since, I'm gonna say nineteen ninety-seven or six? So it's been over twenty years.
Yeah, every twenty years we painted.
Perfect. Perfect. So we're gonna replace the carpet.
We were here for both.
And I wanted to thank Gene Minter and Josh Brown for attending the meeting today of the Elk Landing Foundation. Was very fortunate to receive a check for a hundred thousand dollars to hopefully finish off the windows and doors at the historic John Hand Steelman House at the loveliest Elk Landing, so we're extremely excited about that. And I'd like to make a commitment, Elk Landing, we're gonna finish that building within the next couple of years. I, I feel extremely comfortable that we're gonna have that done. So there's a lot of volunteer hours that go down there, and anyone that hasn't been down to Elk Landing, please take a drive down there. It's well-preserved and it's getting better every day, and I think this building, once it's done, will actually open up a lot of opportunities for tourism for our community. We have a meeting with M M L Dinner tomorrow evening. Does anyone have a, know where that's at?
They changed it from.
Right, that's what I thought. I knew they had changed it.
From Aberdeen to Simbelair, I believe.
Okay, it's in Bel Air. I'm gonna do my best to make it tomorrow night, does anyone else, you're not gonna make it, Charles?
No, I do wish.
I'm going.
You're going?
You guys won't be here.
She says it's gonna be a very short agenda.
Perfect. So we'll go down there, maybe we'll ride together and see how it goes. Okay, when we were at the Maryland Municipal League, they give the elected officials an opportunity to put your business card into the, kind of like the, I call it the Chinese option, that they draw a card out, and I was very fortunate to win the Elkton, Maryland wood plaque, right? Pretty nice, right? So it was shipped today, right? We got it today. So there we go. I wanted the world to see that we received an Elkton, Maryland plaque that was sent to us today, and I guess they were trying to advertise our company, but I'm not sure, quite frankly, who it was, but there we go. There's no, there's no information on the back of the sign. I think if I was marketing that, I would at least have my sticker of my company on the back of the sign, but there we go. Next Tuesday, we're very fortunate to be, next Tuesday and Wednesday, I think we're very fortunate to be hosting from the state of Maryland, the Maryland Economic Development Association, MEETA, will be in Elkton. We're gonna host a meeting, Mary Jo could probably tell us more, but I know that we're hosting the main meeting upstairs or in, in your office?
The main meeting is up here. The last class will be back in the visitor's center in the afternoon.
And currently, we have, how many people registered?
Last Tuesday, there were ninety-eight. I will get a count tomorrow, they're putting everything together, so I'll have a better count.
It's over a hundred, fantastic. I'll tell you, that's, that's great to have a hundred individuals from outside the town. Now, I know there's some town, I think I'm registered, so I'm here, but it's great to have that. And we're gonna host a, a little opening reception forum downtown, and now I think that, I think all of our downtown businesses are gonna benefit from lunch and dinner and so forth, but it's very nice to have them in town. Few other things that I had here, Dan, and I'll give this to you when, when, later on today, but when I, when we were at the M M L Convention, there was a Maryland Environmental Service, which I think we're, we're all familiar with, they have a piece of equipment that they said that they could allow us to use, I don't know if that means with a lease or a rent, but it's a mobile wood grinding unit. And I know that over off of Jones Chapel Road, we had piles and piles of debris, and maybe we've already done it with our wood chipper, but this was some unit that they had there on the floor at M M L.
It's a garden.
Yeah, I mean, this, this was something else. So I got a brochure for you, if you'd like to take a look at it. One other thing that the commissioners and I couldn't look at when we were there was our, we have some, our light poles that are in the heart of our town, but the one thing that stood out to me is there was a light pole, and it looks like it's a banner, but it's actually permanently placed on the light pole, and it's an LED light. So it can be changed to show whatever message that you would like to show, or you could put, you could, you could put whatever type of banner that you would want through LED lights instead of constantly replacing banners. So it's, I think it's something to take a look at. I'll pass this on to, I guess, Mary Jo.
Yeah.
But I think it would be maybe neat to have one or two of those LED lights that we could use for displaying a message. I know that we had been talking about at one time, and Steve, this is for you, I brought this for you, and we had talked about, or attempted maybe to take a look at getting back into the Maryland State Retirement System. I met with the folks there, and I got a contact name here, and I know that we've been, I think we've been told no by, by the letter.
We told her that done before.
Yeah, she told me that if we contacted her, she might be able to help us walk through it and see if we can get back into the state retirement program. So I have a contact name here and some information here, I'll get to you also. And then lastly, as we were walking through, Legit has a healthcare program. Now, they, they told me they're a self-funded health insurance program, it's the local government insurance trust. I know that one time we, we did our financing with Legit. Maybe we could take a look at, see what the healthcare cost would be through the local government group. Might be worth taking a look at. I know this year we didn't have any cost increases, but it might be some additional savings as long as we can keep the same type of healthcare. I think with that, I'm exhausted, I didn't, I don't have anything else. Gene, you're on.
Oh, Dan, I did wanna comment on the yellow lines that are being painted throughout town, it's very noticeable and it's looking really good. So thank everybody for their hard work, please, I think all of us noticed it. The only thing I have is Hinesworth Street, the house, Louis. Where are we at this point?
Jack Barrett House, Jack Daniel Barrett House at three twenty-four Holling Forest Creek. The town purchased the, or purchased the certificate from the company who bought that at the pack sale, and to the court system, as far as I know, I don't know if John can update that, it has to go through the court before the town can acquire, finally acquired somehow.
It didn't work, so I don't have a objection.
No, no guess of when it would be final?
Or is it this century?
This century.
Yeah.
I, I guess my only concern is once we do take possession of it, that we actually demolish it.
Oh, yeah.
We are, right? I mean, I was just concerned.
There's grants up there, so it does look nicer, except for being boarded up and having holes in the.
Yeah, I know, but I, I wasn't, I was concerned if someone did purchase it from us and say, well, we'll demolish it. I, I bet, no, I, I would not be in favor of that.
We gotta take a damn.
Get it down, okay, so there's no excuses?
I was being facetious, I was being in the fall.
Huh?
I said I was being facetious, I think in the fall.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good. Better than nothing, so, all right, thank you very much, I'm done.
Charles?
Well, I called Michelle on Monday, I hope that she relayed the message to either Louis or Dan, but when you're walking on High Street near the dentist, near the bridge, where that unoccupied home is, the tree branches are overwhelming the sidewalk, and you have to walk out the road to get around it. Is that passed on?
Yes.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Earl?
First of all, I wanna commend Mr. Andrew, Public Works, doing a great job around town. I just, just wanna say that personally, and, and the police department, having the police academy, I'm hearing nothing but great things about them, even though, you know, I was gonna help out this. Anyway, no, they're doing a great job, I've had, have a lot of campers in the parks and right there that's for basketball, and a lot of parents are saying they have to get to the, to the police academy, but anyway, just tell everybody that they're doing a great job. The post office, everybody noticed the looks around the post office, the wheeze that were down where you drive in and drop off the mailbox, Public Works again came through with a great.
Demolition.
And they've done a great job. But anyway, I've also just wanna say that you guys are doing an excellent job at the park, no complaints about everybody playing their sports, Parks Records really thought of driving with their, their, their program. So we're finishing up our second week of basketball at the middle school, and kids are having a great time, we had over forty-some kids the first week, and second week was like twenty-some, so we invited some of the kids back, and it's really been a good, good little, little summer program for them, so just wanna say Parks Records is having a good time this year. Thank you.
Very good. Mary Jo?
Okay, I was gonna talk a little more about MEETA, but the mayor took care of that, but I do wanna add, Secretary Holt will be here from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, so it will be a great networking event here right in the town of Elkton. Also, Public Works, I just wanted to say that Meadow Park has looked very nice this year. Everybody's doing a great job on that, and it just looks nice and clean and really nice. Andy, our employee of the quarter, I can't say enough, he is a great, great asset to the town of Elkton, and he has a great crew under him that looks up to him, and so I'm really pleased you're here tonight. And the other thing was our musical main tomorrow night, we're doing something different downtown, we're having family karaoke. Pass it on to all your friends that sing, we have a special DJ Commissioner Gibbons who does this.
DJ.
Do you DJ in all?
I don't know.
What did I say? Oh, my God.
I'm gonna say I'm still bad.
Charlie, you were on my mind to sing, but you are going to M M L. But pass it along to your friends, if you're in walking distance for downtown, walk down and see, it's gonna be a fun night. So, that's it.
Do you have one more comment? You know I'd always have that one. Everyone, whoever's involved behind all this, it's a great improvement with, through the hospital, coming through High Street without having to put a whole bunch of money out, slowing down the, the traffic, I don't know whether you're here to speak on that, but it's, it really was a good idea with them stop signs, because it did make the traffic slow down a stop. I don't know where you're going with that, but anyway, I just wanna thank you, whoever's involved.
The, Chief, I, I did wanna ask a quick comment. I, I wanted to, I think everyone's aware that there was a, a person found at Marina Park on Sunday, is there any details that you can give out? At this point, there's no details.
No, there's, the seizure sent to medical examiner's office, we haven't gotten any information back yet.
Very good. Thank you. With that, this is the time of the meeting that we opened up the floor. Mrs. Clark, come on down if you'd like and.
I'm first.
Mrs. Clark, the mayor of North Street, come on down.
Thank you. All right, I'm upset with Mr. Klein over there, because he just took over fire. The reason I'm here was to commend our town of Elkton Public Works. Say, I'm out at six thirty in the morning. Everybody wonders why I'm out at six thirty in the morning. I'm nervous, I've stood up ten times, and I'm all around town, and they're not working. Hot weather, cold weather, the things you do at Meadow Park, the things that these gentlemen ladies that have to stuff and do and work with, cold weather, hot weather, everything, they need to be commended, they probably do. This little guy over here is my gentle giant. He's my gentle giant. If I have a little project that takes five minutes, I can call your director of Public Works up and I'll say it's me, and he'll say, I'll call Andy. And it's done. And not only Andy, the whole crew, the whole crew. And not only Andy, the whole crew, the whole crew. Our police department was recognized, which they should have been, but is there any way our department of public works can be recognized in some way, with banner or proclamation or something? Because they're always out doing, and it's not cheap, but it's not easy work. And there's two little girls, and they're driving, and I can beep beeps and highs and all of this in my own tiny little way. I did try to recognize them, and who knows, each employee, but this is my tiny way. But they do, a wonderful job, and I, I just can't say enough, and I appreciate that, and my little guy over there. Okay, now, that's the end of that. I live on North Street, as you all know. Tell me about the alley behind North Street. What are we doing with that? It looks like a certain portion has been started to be paved, are you doing the whole alley, or what are we doing?
The worst portion, we said part of the road restoration project, the worst part of the alley, which is closer to Kat here, we went like a hundred feet in, we're actually putting asphalt in that. The rest of the alley, the level of service looks fine for what's going on with it, but the very, very last portion, which is awful, so that's why we actually mailed out, replacing that portion. So that part was really bad. The rest of your alley is very serviceable.
Oh, would you mind rechecking sometime? That's all I'm proud of being out tonight. Everything goes well today, I was telling them that today. About my budget, gas, milk, and my budget electric, they come together at five hundred dollars. I don't know. But that's, that's okay. But my main reason for being here is, like I said, the police department, they were well recognized, which they should be, chief.
Thank you.
But I think our public works staff, they are outstanding, they are outstanding in all things. I appreciate them. Oh, I've got the thing.
All right.
There is a thing now.
Perfect. The one thing that we've always stressed and we've talked to Dan and the Public Works team about is that they are not only the crew that makes things happen, but they're in the public eye all the time. And they're, I want to say, kind of our ambassadors out there, and when you guys make things look great, it makes things go well. And I think we all realize that, and you guys do a great job. Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
I'd just like to reiterate what Joanne just said about the public works.
Now, Pat, please state your name.
I live on one thirty-seven Milestone Road.
Thank you.
Most people down here know I'm associated with Elk Landing. And on occasion, I'll turn a camera on or I'll go down and do whatever, and there's a giant tree branch laying across the roadway, or, you know, anything that seems drastically wrong, all I got to do is, you know, one thing called a bin, and usually by the time I hang up the bin, somebody is there to take care of the problem. And I don't know what we would do if we didn't have a couple of works behind us.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, talking about a house on Hollingsworth Street, might be a sore subject. Anything going on with the Rogers? As far as Rogers?
I can tell you that I met with Cecil Bank on, I think it was Monday, and that was brought up, but there's nothing at this point.
They kind of keep telling me that, right?
Before, no, there was, there was, there was action before, and now it's no action, but they're looking at going with a new, I want to say, a new real estate company, but they, there was an offer out there, and I don't think it was accepted.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
Can I do one more thing?
Yes. And next time, I'm going to have to have you up here, but go ahead.
Why don't you say anything? I also would like to formally thank Jean for all the hard work she put into for us getting the grant to work on the John Steel and House, standing up there, it's going to be a great improvement, and we've been wanting to do something for so long, but just to come up with the kind of money that's on tape to finish it all.
I think we're all saying.
So thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, Dr. Zumo?
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to, Rich Zumo, CEO from Union Hospital, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners and Mr. George for your helping approving this pilot with Unison. It's a very important project for the hospital, not only to save money, but to avoid having a situation that we saw down in Florida where air conditioners go out and the temperature in the hospital goes to unbearable levels. It's really an important issue, and safety is greatly appreciated. I also wanted to thank you all again for the stop sign at Singhley High, although it's somewhat short of what we had hoped for. And I did send an email to Mr. George immediately after that, because we had somebody fly through, you know, obviously knew stop sign, didn't see it at forty or fifty miles an hour, but I do think that it has had a very positive impact. And it certainly is a, is a, is a help when you're on Singhley to turn on High Street when you can't see, you know, the oncoming traffic with the parked cars there. It's really, I think, it's very much appreciated and it's really improved the safety of the crosswalk as well, so we're keeping an eye on it, but it's really greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have to have a closed meeting this evening to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose and matters related to that. I need to have a motion to have a closed meeting. Have a motion and second any discussion with that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we're going to have a closed meeting and we will not reconvene tonight, so thank you all for coming tonight, and please exit as quickly as you can.